I'm calling the committee of the whole meeting for corporate council June 19th, 2017 to order. And I will begin by asking Deputy Mayor Henderson if there are any additions to the agenda.
Yes, Your Worship, there are a number. A memo from the Treasurer Director of Corporate Services regarding 2016 vacancy rebates for industrial and commercial buildings. A notice of Committee of Adjustment hearing to be held on June 20th, 2017, file number A 0217. 159 Stewart Street, Coburg, Marchand, including the planning staff report. A notice of Committee of Adjustment hearing to be held on June 20th, 2017, file number A 0317. 882 Joan Chalovitch Way, Coburg, Peter, including the planning staff report. A letter from Pride Northumberland requesting flag raising will be presented at the meeting. The Act should recommend it that these matters be added to the agenda.
Any discussion? All in favor? Let's carry it. Are there any declarations of interest from members of council tonight? Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes, Your Worship, I have filled out the form, so requested. And the rationale is there's a heritage permit tonight. PH number 2017-14. For scope to work at my own residential property located at 368 King Street West, Coburg, Henderson, and since it's my personal residence, obviously I have a direct conflict.
Okay, it's so noted, and good luck with that porch.
Your Worship, under presentations, Andrew Grunda, Watson Associates, regarding development charges review.
Welcome, Andrew. We've been seeing a lot of you lately, and that's not a bad thing. You know, I think we've made good progress over the last few meetings, so you're here to give all of council an update, and I very much appreciate that.
Thank you. And yes, you're right, there has been quite a process being undertaken with the staff, yourself, and other members of council in this regard. So, the intention of the presentation today is to report back to council with respect to the development charges by law. And so, what you may recall from our public meeting last December is that municipalities impose development charges to recover growth-related costs from new development. And as part of that process, what's required is that municipalities have to undertake an update to that by law at least every five years. And so, this was the scheduled update for the municipality in that that had to be undertaken before the by law expired in January 2017. When we had the public meeting in December, there were a number of questions about the background study, and also some further technical issues that were raised by one of the developers' consultants. However, to allow the municipality to continue to impose development charges, what was determined by council was that they would pass the by law maintaining the rates at the current levels with the provided indexing for the year, and that they would not look at any increase until further discussion was had with the development community to solicit their opinion on the background study and underlying by law. And so, that's the resolution that was passed by council in this regard at January 9th meeting, to form that group, to review the issue further, and to report back to council by July 1st on what was found as a result of those discussions. And so, the following that direction from council, a working group was formed. It consisted of members of council, town staff members, as well as economic development committee members. There were a number of development industry stakeholders, notably all of those who had made delegations at the public meeting in December, and obviously attended by us as well. And the process that we had undertaken over the preceding number of months commenced with the first meeting on March 2nd, where what we wanted to do was to sort of go back to first principles and talk about the mandate of the working group that was formed, an overview of the requirements of the Development Charges Act, and that it is a fairly prescriptive piece of legislation that must be followed by municipalities, to review with them in detail the findings in the 2016 DC background study and the proposed by law. At that meeting, what we had also indicated was that we were going to provide written responses to the information that came out of the public meeting, as well as the subsequent written correspondence that was provided by Urban Metrics at that public meeting. And so, we had prepared a document responding to those issues, some of them policy-related, others more technical in nature, and we provided that to the working group in advance of our second meeting, which was held on April 27th. And at that meeting, we discussed those in detail, some further clarification was sought, and some other issues were also identified. And so, we had a second sort of technical meeting, which would be the third meeting of the working group, and that was held on May 29th, where again, we provided in advance review to any of those further items for clarification, and then ultimately had identified the recommendations to the changes that we saw fit from those discussions to that 2016 background study and the proposed by law. So, in line with the direction from council, the purpose this evening is to provide you with those recommendations that arose from the group and our participation therein. And then after this evening, if council sees fit to move this process forward, what would be undertaken is that there would be an update study that would be formally prepared, that that would also include an amending by law to your 2016 DC by law, and that that would move through the statutory public process again of having a public meeting and hearing any input on the matter before council considers passing that amending by law to adjust the rates. The one thing to note is that, given the date of the background study and the by law that has been passed earlier this year, that we would need to move through that process by January 3rd, 2018, to allow the existing background study to remain in effect and not have to undertake a complete new background study. So, in the discussions with the working group, as I mentioned, there were a number of issues and comments that were received, and they were further discussed at these meetings. They included, as I mentioned earlier, some items related to the calculation methodology that was used in the DC, and then also some other policy considerations for council's consideration going forward. And when we look, first of all, at the methodological issues that were discussed, there were some issues pertaining to these broad three categories. One was with respect to the underlying growth forecast projections that were used for the purpose of determining the charge. The second category of consideration was the eligibility of the services that had been included, and the calculation of the service standard requirements under the act. And then lastly, with respect to the increasing need for service that was attributable to development and the associated capital costs. In the detailed background information that was provided for council for this evening's presentation, what we can see is that there was further information discussed with respect to the background study. Those technical issues, as I referred to, related to changes to the reserve fund balances. So, there was a question about the balances that the municipality had in the DC reserve funds at the time of preparing the 26 background study, and whether those balances were overstated because there's a funding obligation to top up those reserves where there are exemptions from those charges that had been witnessed over the last five years of that by law. And so, through that process, it was determined that that should be adjusted, and those exemptions should be funded from non-DC sources, and so that was adjusted in the calculation of the charge. The second consideration that was made was with respect to the service standard calculations for Parks and Rec. And so, this is a requirement that we must measure the historic average level of service over the prior 10 years with regard to all the services that are included in the by law to ensure that we're not imposing a higher level of service on future development than is historically been provided. And so, what was noted was that the Coburg Fitness and Aquatic Center had changed ownership with the Y in 2011, and so that had been adjusted in terms of that inventory to reflect that it was not providing municipal services beyond that date. And then the third component was with respect to cost estimates and DC eligibility. So, there was some question about whether services were eligible, that we're able to satisfy that they were. With respect to transportation services, there was some question about the Public Works and Parks operating facility, and whether or not that would be a shared facility with Parks, and therefore should be accounted for within each of those service definitions. So, that adjustment was made. Also acknowledging that there would be contributions anticipated from the county with respect to specific traffic signals, so those adjustments were made as well. And lastly, with respect to Darcy Street, the capital cost to reflect what we, what the town anticipates those actual costs of construction to be, and the associated grant funding was also revised. The changes with respect to Parks and Rec, again, largely stem from the change in ownership around the Fitness and Aquatic Center, and to look at the anticipated grant funding towards those future expansions. And so, those were the technical adjustments that were made. There were no other adjustments required methodologically with respect to the growth forecast or any other items other than those that we've noted. The policy issues that were discussed, there was a bit of discussion around the town's current policy whereby all charges are imposed on a uniform basis, with the exception of charges related to services for water, wastewater, and storm services. In the current policy, the municipality differentiates those charges between what's defined as the existing urban service area and the Coburg East community. And the reason for that is when the Coburg East community was identified, the nature of the servicing and the treatment of that servicing was deemed to be different, and therefore the municipality charges those areas differently. Through the discussion with the working group, it's been determined from those discussions, our recommendation being to maintain the current area-specific approach with respect to those, so no change is being recommended from what was contained in the 2016 background study in that regard. There was also a discussion at the public meeting in December of last year that the increase in the charges was significant in terms of the opinion of the development community, and that those should be phased in over a period of time and not immediately implementable. Based on the position that council's taken, whereby you've provided for additional time for review before considering adjusting those fees, at the earliest, these fees could be adjusted through this process would be September, providing the development community roughly nine months for which to adjust their pricing in anticipation of those increases. And so, again, because of that process that council has proposed and proceeded through, we feel that no further phase in would be required to the proposed charges. We also heard discussions particularly from high-density development builders as part of the working group, that they would like to see council consider exemptions from the charges with respect to either purpose-built rental accommodations or affordable housing, and that could be accommodated through the public process if council deemed that to be appropriate with respect to your policies whereby a lower charge could be imposed on those types of defined dwelling units. The thing that is important to note, however, is that to the extent council has any exemptions, like we talked about earlier with respect to the reserve funds, that's revenue that you're foregoing for collection from DCs that'll have to be made up from non-DC sources. So, to the extent that you reduce those fees, any reduction in revenue would have to be made up from other sources than DCs, principally taxes. And lastly, a discussion that we looked at quite considerably at our last meeting with the working group was the timing of the DC payments. So, right now, in your by law, development charges are payable at the time of building permit issuance, which is the standard collection timing for DCs under the act. Commentary that we had heard from some of the developers at the table is that they would like to pay lower charges earlier and have the, that reduction made up with higher payments later. Obviously, under the act, because we cannot have that level of phase in without it being paid for by non-DC sources, the way that you could effectuate that would be to do it through agreement, whereby you would negotiate with the specific developers on a case-by-case basis to allow them to pay lower charges initially, and to seek the amount of that reduction later, at some point later, and that would be negotiated in the agreement. What would be important to note as part of that is that council would want to make sure that there were security provisions built into that agreement, so that if there was any default, those charges would not default to the home buyer. And so, the way that was left was that the developers were going to provide the town with a proposal in that regard for their consideration. As I understand it, that hasn't come forward as of yet, but that may occur in the coming months as we proceed through the public process if council directs us to do so. So, this is the revised schedule of charges that would replace the schedule of charges currently in the by law today, and so they're denominated in $2016. Again, what you see on the left-hand column are the services that would be imposed on a municipal-wide basis, including all of those services except for water, wastewater, and storm, which you see below, as being imposed separately either in the defined existing urban service area or the Coburg East service area. Across the top, you'll see the charges are for residential and non-residential development, with the residential charges varying by build form, whether it's a single and semi-detached, an apartment, or a multiple, and number of bedrooms for those apartments and multiples. And on the right-hand side, the per-square-foot charge for non-residential, that being commercial, industrial, and institutional. With respect to the single and semi-detached unit rate, you can see the rate would be $16,382 per unit if that development was in the existing urban serviced area, or $24,835 in the Coburg East community if the development occurred in that area, again, reflective of the more intensive capital needs with respect to water, sewer, and storm in that jurisdiction. Similarly, for non-residential, the charge would be $6.66 in the existing urban serviced area, and $10.08 in the Coburg East community. So, those are the charges, again, that would replace the schedule in the by law denominated in $2016. As we are in 2017, those charges, as I mentioned in the introduction, would be indexed. And so, this provides you with a comparison of those charges indexed to $2017, titled as the 2016 DC Background Study Recommended Revisions, and compares that to the current charges that are in place and those that were identified in the DC Background Study in 2016. And so, when you compare the studies, recommended charges in 2016 before the working group was formed and those discussions were held, what you'll see is that the revised rates that are now being proposed are about 1% lower per residential dwelling unit, so not a significant adjustment from what was in the previous DC Background Study, just some minor revisions as we referred to earlier, and at about 2% with respect to non-residential. However, when we compare them to the current charges that are in place, it's a more significant increase, where we would see the charges in the existing urban service area increase from your current rates that are being imposed of $12,175 to $16,906, or an increase of approximately $4,700 per unit. The charges for the Coburg East community would increase by about $6,200 a unit from the current rates today of $19,418 to $25,630. Similarly, when we look at the non-residential charges, we would see the existing urban service area increase by, from $5.62 to $6.86, or an increase of about $1.24. And within the Coburg East community, just under $1, increasing from $9.44 a square foot to $10.40 a square foot. And so, as we provided at the public meeting with those revised rates, we've compared those charges to development charges imposed in other municipalities, recognizing that it's not only the lower-tier municipalities who have the ability to impose DCs, but also upper-tier municipalities and school boards have that ability as well. And so, when we look at the charges, what you see are the black arrows representing the charges that are currently imposed today in the existing urban serviced area on the right, and further to the left in the Coburg East community, and the red arrow indicating what those new proposed charges would be based on the calculations that we just provided. And what we see is that the municipality's position stays relatively unchanged, with the Coburg East community increasing to levels just above that of Peterborough, but well below those charges for similar dwellings in Durham region, and the existing urban serviced area charges increasing to levels comparable to those imposed in Cabin Monahan and Coortha Lakes. However, when we look at apartment units that have two bedrooms or more, we see a more pronounced increase, and this is reflective of the underlying occupancy of those units as a result of census data that was provided with respect to the county more broadly. And so, what we see again is a more significant increase, where the Coburg East charges currently comparable to those in Coortha Lakes and Port Hope would increase to levels just below those that we see in Uxbridge and Skugog. And within the existing urban service area, the charges that are currently imposed today would increase to, again, levels that we see in Port Hope more commonly for those types of development units. The last two surveys that we've included is for commercial developments, that being commercial DCs that would be imposed within those two areas of the municipality. Again, what we see is those positions are relatively unchanged, particularly with respect to the Coburg East community, a little bit more pronounced moving past Belleville, and more comparable to Hamilton Township and Port Hope within the existing urban serviced area. And lastly, with respect to industrial, what you'll note firstly is that industrial charges under the current by law are only imposed in the Coburg East community, and that relative position would stay largely unchanged comparable to those in Oshawa, or more appropriately imposed by the region of Durham, and that Oshawa exempts industrial. But to the far right, what you see is that the current policy is to exempt industrial fully if that development occurs in the existing urban serviced area, and so that is not being recommended to be changed. One item before I just wrap up with next steps, I'd forgotten to mention that there was some information that was provided with respect to Marina Services in terms of the underlying needs, growth-related needs for those. What you can see identified is a charge increasing from the current rate of roughly about $214 per dwelling unit to a proposed charge of about $300 per unit, so relatively modest in the context of the entire DC. What that's reflective of is that the municipality, in its prior DC Background Study in 2011, had identified the need for additional Marina Services. It's our understanding that while the decision on the ultimate form of that has been deferred until the completion of the waterfront study, that it's still anticipated that there may be needs in that regard, and so those provisions have been maintained within the study. However, if council wishes to deviate from that, or to remove that service, then that is something that can be done through this subsequent public process that we're seeking through this subsequent public process that we're seeking direction to proceed on. So in terms of next steps, obviously, the request is to receive direction from council to move forward with the update in terms of the DC Background Study Amendment and corresponding amending bylaw. We would seek to undertake that and to be able to comply with the timing to have that amended bylaw in place by January of next year. We would have to issue that Background Study and amending bylaw no later than November. We would then undertake the DC Background Study in the subsequent 60-day period that's required under the Act and bring that forward for council to consider its adoption and to bring those rates into effect. So that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Well, thank you very much, Andrew. That certainly explains the process. I should maybe tell all members of council that the representative, council representatives on the committee were the deputy mayor and myself, and then, of course, staff were Mr. Davie and Mr. Peacock. The person who chaired the meeting was the chair of our Economic Development Advisory Committee, so that was what the committee was comprised of, along with a few, as Andrew said, a few developers who were very interested in the process. And I might just add, just for council's information, Andrew, that when there was talk about DC relief for new multi-residential rental property, since we've had that discussion as of Wednesday this week at county council, we will be passing a bylaw to reduce the tax rate on new multi-residential rental by 50%. So that will certainly provide the investors with a great amount of relief on that side of it and take the pressure off requests for DC relief. So I'm opening up to members of council, who may have some questions. Counselor Darling?
Yes, thank you, sir. That was very well done, and it did explain a few questions on route that I had. Some of the developers that have requested reductions in the development charges, do you know if these developers also do developments in Oshawa and Durham area? Like, I mean, are they paying the development fees there and then requesting less fees here? Or are you aware of that?
I don't know specifically if the gentlemen in the room have developments outside of the town. I wouldn't know that specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other members of council? Counselor Darling, again?
Yes, I guess I just want to elaborate a little bit on the Marina one. At the time the development charges, that was a placeholder in case we wanted to add more slips, and this council has chosen at this time not to. And so that still is a placeholder for those development charges. If we wanted to do other projects that the development charges could be used for, we could still divert that money toward those projects even if it wasn't for slips. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it would be wise to state that, you know, as a result of the waterfront study, there could be something come forward that we would want to invest in, you know, some expansion of the existing Marina building, for example. But I think that if we don't, with all of the developments taking place right now, if we don't leave it in the short term, because there is so much development, we'll be missing out on accumulating some development charges. If it turns out we don't need them, then so be it. But I think we'd be wise to leave it in for the short term, and even if there's some concern from the public, you know, we could put wording in the bylaw when it's passed to assure them that the money is not going to new slips, contrary to what one of our popular bloggers would have you believe. Other discussion? Okay, well, that was one of the easiest ones, Andrew.
[laughing]
Obviously, we will have more discussion later when you're not here, but I really do appreciate all the work you've put into gathering all the background information, doing all the research that was requested of you by, you know, various representatives of the development group, and I think it added, certainly added a lot of clarity for everyone when you were able to, you know, justify the charges. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Your worship, we now have General Government Services.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Henderson, you can take the chair.
Thank you, worship. There is a memo from the Chief Administration Officer regarding an updated action plan for the 2015-2018 council strategic plan for the Town of Coburg. The action recommended that council endorse the Town of Coburg strategic plan components 2015-2018, update dated February 8, 2017. And further, the council accept the 2015-2018 council strategic plan, updated action plan dated June 19, 2017 for information purposes. It's before you. I know as council, we were certainly part of putting this plan together, and I'll open it for any questions or discussion. Mayor Brockinier?
Thank you, Chair Henderson. I think it's worthy to note that after we developed the strategic plan, we did put it out for public comment, and we never got so much as one comment back from the public. And so obviously, you know, silence is approval, and so it makes sense that we now go ahead and endorse the plan as well as receive it for information.
Any other points of discussion from members of council? Seeing none. All those in favor? Against? Carried. Moving on, there is a memo from the Chief Administration Officer regarding development charges for the Town of Coburg. The action recommended that council direct the development charges background study be amended to include the recommended changes as presented in the Watson Report dated June 6, 2017, and that the amended development charges background study be issued no later than September 1, 2017. And further, that with respect to specific policy issues identified by the working group, number one, no exception or reduction in development charges with respect to affordable rental housing projects be included in the bylaw. Number two, that development charges as outlined in the amended development charges background study come into effect as of the passing of the bylaw with no phase-in period. And three, that council direct staff to develop a policy for council to use when considering requests for deferred payment agreements as currently allowed as per Section 27 of the Development Charges Act. And again, if you have questions, I'm sure you can direct them either A to Mr. Grundy, who just presented, Mr. McGlashan, Director of Planning, or if need be, Mayor Brockinier, or myself as members of the committee. Are there any points of clarification from members of council? Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I guess this is through you to whomever, but I'm interested in the fact that the county is changing the tax rate, reducing it. Is that something we would consider, and if so, how would that get considered?
Mayor Brockinier?
If I may, Chair Henderson, yes. So when it comes to taxation rules, the upper tier makes the decisions, and it gets passed on to us. So we will automatically assume the bylaw that we're going to pass this Wednesday.
Any other points of clarification, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Against? Carried. There's a memo from the Chief Administration Officer regarding a West Northumberland Transportation Review Committee. The action recommended that council approve the Town of Coburg participation in the Regional Transportation Review Committee, namely the West Northumberland Public Transportation Committee, and appoint Mayor Brockinier, Counselor Rowden, Public Works Coordinator, Stephen Peacock, Chief Administration Officer, Barry Thrasher, Director of Public Works, and Renee Champagne, Public Works Administrative Assistant, as the Town of Coburg representatives on the committee. And further, that the committee be mandated to investigate needs, efficiencies, and effective delivery of public transportation services in West Northumberland through collaboration of existing public transportation service providers as outlined in the draft of terms of reference for the committee and attached to the staff report as Appendix A. Are there questions? I'll certainly refer to Mayor Brockinier. Any further questions? Counselor McCarthy?
Sorry, I was interested in what the mayor had to say, Deputy Mayor.
Well, thank you, Chair Henderson. So the only comment I wanted to make was that the reason Mayor Sanders and I are on the committee is because we're the ones who have been collaborating behind the scenes on different initiatives that we might be able to work together on, and we felt transit was one that offered some really good opportunities for both municipalities. So as a result of that, we are on the committee, but it's really the working group that's going to do all the work. Thank you very much, Mr. Thrasher.
Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and whoever could answer this. The point-to-point service, is it being considered that this would be offered outside the regular transit hours? Because one of the great concerns is, in terms of accessibility, is there's no way to get around outside of the transit hours because of lack of accessible taxis.
Mayor Brockinier? Or Mr. Peacock?
Yes, well, yes and yes. Mr. Peacock can talk about some of the specific items.
Yes, through the mayor and deputy mayor. The point-to-point service, there would be alignment of policy across all the different service providers if we were to work together so that different services could actually help other services with their own service. A good example would be when a single ride comes from Port Hope to the Coburg Hospital, and then there's a single ride going from Coburg over to the medical clinic in Port Hope, there should be ability of the same piece of equipment to do both rides. And those type of efficiencies are what we're looking for. And there's all sorts of opportunities to look at things like zoning for payment, so that if there's a single zone for each of the municipalities, then another zone that connects the two, and then maybe a greater zone for outside. There's all sorts of opportunities, and this is just the beginning. All this information, as it gets developed, will be coming back to council for their consideration.
Counselor McCarthy?
Well, thank you. I'm delighted this is happening. We've all been talking about how to go forward, but it's more than just about transportation. Hello. Just about transportation is the idea that we work closely together for efficient use of resources and hopefully keeping our tax rates sustainable, but I'm really, really pleased this is going forward.
Okay. Any other discussion, members of council? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Against? Carried. There's a memo from the Treasurer, Director of Corporate Services regarding 2016 vacancy rebates for industrial and commercial buildings. The act recommended that council approve the reduction of property taxes as of May 31, 2017, as outlined in the 2016 vacancy report, an amount of $324,969.1 on the following basis. Town of Coburg, $124,650.96. County of Northumberland, $70,811.20. Education, $129,506.85. And there is no amount recorded for the DBIA. This is something that we do monitor on certainly more than an annual basis. I think it speaks for itself. I know it's being monitored by Mr. Davie carefully in his department. Are there any other further Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Against? Carried. There's a memo from the Bylaw Enforcement Policy Coordinator regarding amendments to the municipal community grants policy, FIN Admin 1 for the Town of Coburg. The action recommended that council adopt the municipal community grants policy amendments to provide decision-making criteria for municipal council when responding to requests for municipal community grants. The fundamental goal of this policy is to achieve consistency, fairness, and demonstrate due diligence with respect to proper use of public funds when grants are involved, as outlined in the policy and corresponding forms attached to this report as Appendix A. I'd like to thank a number of members, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Sagan, also staff. We worked in multiple meetings. As you can see, the council, the changes or modifications or amendments are highlighted in yellow. There are a substantial number. And as we change the language within the policy, we also change the forms so that they would be in concurrence. In other words, there would be alignment from the language to the actual forms. We indicated that we would do this at a two-year mid-mark, which we've done. And of course, our goal is to get this out as soon as possible with council's approval, knowing that this will go out to community groups, including those with parking, and they have a deadline, as was last year, of submission before or on October 31 of this coming year. I'll certainly take any questions. Mayor Brockinier?
Thank you, Chair Henderson. And I fully agree with all the changes in the policy and appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I just want to make sure that since there are changes, everyone or every organization that has requested some sort of grant or financial relief in the past, will they be given a copy of the new policy with the changes highlighted?
That's my understanding. That would be done, but perhaps I'll direct it to Mr. Davie or Mr. Larmour. Mr. Larmour?
Yes, as soon as this is passed next week, we'll be reaching out to all the grants and organizations and getting them out right away.
And for your information, Mayor Brockinier, that will also include the new groups that have been added through parking, which wasn't the case before, because as you know, they came in as a separate submission date. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you to Mr. Larmour. Would it be specific to draw attention for organizations that have received grants in the past that now they would be considered ineligible, or will they have to figure that out by just receiving the new grant policy? In other words, can we red-flag them now?
Mr. Larmour?
Yes, myself and the Director of Corporate Services will go through all the community grants, the ones that were eligible and the ones in the past that applied, and reach out to them.
Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you. But there are some that were eligible in the past that will not be eligible. Will they be notified?
Mr. Larmour?
Yes, we'll review it, and then we'll notify those ones that would be in the eligible category.
Counselor Sagan?
Through you to Mr. Larmour. Is it possible that we could have some kind of a press release to possible groups that have never applied for a community grant? I know the funds are not limited. They are limited, they're not unlimited, but there are some groups here in town that may still qualify and may have never applied. So is there a possibility of maybe doing a press release so that other groups may come forward with their applications?
Mr. Larmour?
Through you, Chair, to the member of council. Yes, we'll be working with our communications officer. We'll be, this year, putting everything online, as well as fillable forms. Some people like the old-fashioned way, they print it out and fill it in, but we will have fillable forms, and we'll discuss a press release on that as well.
Any other questions, members of council? Again, I'd like to thank everybody, and we're hoping this will take us into the new term of council, and perhaps at that time that council can decide at that time if they wish to renew it on a biannual basis or every two years. At this point, all those in favor? Against? Carried. The correspondents from the Eastern Ontario Regional Network seeking support for a local resolution for improving cell services and building a public safety broadband network in Eastern Ontario. The act recommended that council endorse and support the Eastern Ontario Regional Network resolution for improving cell services and building a public safety broadband network in Eastern Ontario. Allow Mayor Brockinier to speak to this because he is part of the caucus- Ontario. Allow Mayor Brockin here to speak to this because he is part of the caucus, the Eastern Ontario Warren Caucus. And I know this is very high on their agenda. So Mayor Brockin here, perhaps you could add certain words to this or statements?
Absolutely, Chair Henderson. So the original project for EORN, Eastern Ontario Regional Network is what it stands for, was to supply a high-speed internet to approximately 90% of the rural community for Eastern Ontario, which Eastern Ontario runs from Northumberland County all the way east to the Quebec border and north to Halliburton. And we successfully completed that project. It was a $170 million project. It was completed under budget and on schedule. And after having done that, we actually had a little bit of money left. And out of that money, we went around to each of the communities in Eastern Ontario to see which ones had, which had industrial centers where they would like to have high-speed put in there. So we added high-speed networking to a number of industrial parks throughout Eastern Ontario. But then also, in doing so, we discovered there is what they call a cell gap. There are many places, as you drive, and we've all experienced it, where you drive through Eastern Ontario and you don't have any, your cellphone won't work. And not only does it not work just to make a phone call, but it doesn't work for anyone who's conducting business, trying to locate a business, or trying to conduct business over their phone, which more and more people are doing every day. You know, we've seen a migration from desktop computers to tablets, and now the smartphones are starting to take over. So it's increasingly important that the smartphones have access. And so that's what the cell gap is all about. It's about, not just about the economic development, but also the importance of first responders being able to connect with someone. So this is a very, very important initiative. And we need to get the, both the federal and provincial government behind us so that we can complete this and make sure there is a cell service right throughout Eastern Ontario. Because it is such a large area. As a matter of fact, it's the same size as Nova Scotia.
Thank you.
Does that help Chair Henderson?
It certainly does. Is there any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll call for discussion, the approval. All those in favor? Against? Carried. There's a letter from Adam Burl, Chair Pride Northumberland, dated June 9th, 2017, requesting raising of a pride flag at Victoria Hall in the month of June 2017. There's not an action, but all percent one, that the LGBTQ pride flag be flown at Victoria Hall in the month of June 2017, per the request from Adam Burl, Chair of Pride Northumberland. Just for a follow-up, this was initially done from the Coburg Police Services when they had their opening of their special facilities at the police station. And this is a way of us joining in conjunction with the Coburg Police Services on behalf of the members of the Town of Coburg. As you know, there is a date, I believe it says coming week, we're going to have a day celebration, a Pride Day celebration. I can be corrected, but I think Counsel McCarthy, it's on June 27th, maybe a Friday, thank you, 23rd. And so it meets with that focus. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Against? Carried.
You worship, we now have Public Works Services?
Okay, Counsel Rowden, please take the chair.
Thank you, Your Worship. One item on the agenda tonight, and I have a memo here from the Director of Public Works dated May 18th, 2017, regarding the annual curbside treasure hunt in the Town of Coburg. And the action recommended that council proclaim Saturday, August 12th, 2017, as Curbside Treasure Hunt Day in Town of Coburg. And as you know, that, and we've done this in the past, and it's worked very efficiently. And it's a good date for young people that are heading off to college or university that could pick up some stuff on the streets that are free, and they can use it in their apartments or dorms. So someone's trash is always somebody's treasure. So we're looking for any questions involving? Seeing no questions, and all in favor? Carried.
You worship, we now have Protection Services. Counsel McCarthy, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll place the recommendation on the floor, which is that the request by Kate DeGrucci for the exemption to sign by law 008-2009, as amended, to erect lawn signs for charity yard sale be respectfully denied on the basis that it is contrary to the signed by law and could be seen as setting a precedent for other similar requests in the future. So as you remember, Kate and the woman that is hosting the party made a presentation to council at the last regular council meeting. And it was done in time for Protection Services Working Group or Committee to discuss it. And this is tough to do because they were passionate, it's a worthy cause. But it really becomes an issue for all of those kinds of events, and there are many that occur in town, that if we do allow the signage for this, that things will crop up with other organizations, all for good reason. The difference with the other organizations who are allowed signs is that they are, they have financial statements, we know who they are, and we know what they're doing with the funds. That also becomes another issue, is we have no background on these groups. Again, sincerely presented by the two women, but it's word of mouth. And we do believe it opens up the town to a certain amount of risk because of those kinds of requests coming forward more and more. And we have no way of verifying that the funds that are being raised will be used in the intended manner. But that comment is no reflection on this particular initiative. And I think that's pretty much it. Are there any other questions from council members? There being none, I'll place the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries.
You worship, we now have Planning and Development Services?
Okay, Counsel Burkett, you take the chair, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. First item I have tonight is a memo from the Director of Planning and Development regarding removal of the holding H symbol, Division Street Coburg, Beach Walk Place, Harry James Group, Inc. The action recommended that council authorize preparation of a bylaw to remove the holding H symbol from property known as 169 Division Street Coburg. Now, this is something that we do all the time, it's a very routine thing. If there's any questions, I'm sure we can answer them. Seeing none, call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Second item I have tonight is a memo from the Director of Planning and Development regarding for an extension of a draft plan of subdivision approval, West Park Village, Phase 5 Van Dyke Group of Companies. The action recommended that council approve the request by Van Dyke Group of Companies and grant two-year extension to the draft approval for the plan of subdivision for the 3.78 hectare vacant property located on the south side of Elgin, Elgin Street West, County Road Number 2, Coburg immediately west of Canadian Tire, known as Parkview Village, Phase 5. If there's any questions to this, I would ask Director McLaughlin to answer them. Your worship?
Thank you Counsel, or Chair Burkett. So the question I have, does this just apply to the residential part of the development, or also the commercial development that will front on Elgin Street?
Director McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. It applies to both, Mr. Mayor, the commercial and the residential properties as they're intertwined.
Any other questions from members of council? Counsel Darling?
Yes, I've noticed they've been pushing back topsoil in that area. So there's no proposal to start building anything there. They're just cleaning off topsoil and it'll stay plowed up for a period of two years. Are good?
As I said in my council report a couple of weeks ago, they're moving the dirt from the park on Kerr Street up to there to build up, because they have to build up as part of the thing. So they're removing that so they can get the park down on Kerr Street. Any other questions from members of council? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Third item I have is a memo from the Secretary of Planning and Sustainability Advisory Committee regarding revised terms of reference for the committee. Action recommended that council endorse the recommendation of the Planning Advisory and Sustainability Advisory Committee and authorize a revised mandate and terms of reference for the committee as presented. Are there any questions regarding this item? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Number four, I have a memo from the Secretary, Coburg Heritage Advisory Committee regarding a heritage permit application to construct a new front and upper porch on residential property located at 368 King Street West, Coburg, Henderson. The action recommended that council endorse recommendations to the Coburg Heritage Advisory Committee and grant a heritage permit, number HP 2017-014, for the following scope of work at the residential property located at 368 King Street West, Coburg, Henderson. Removal of existing front porch deck and construction of a new two-story front and upper porch, replacement of existing second-story aluminum door with a historic wooden door, installation of 17 new wood storm windows recreated with original glass in new wood frames, and including the replacement of four existing aluminum windows on second story, removal of exterior coach lights and installation of single new exterior light fixture on the first story of the front porch, installation of two coach lamp fixtures, the Canadian flag and the Town of Coburg flag on the second story upper porch, installation of four or five wooden side light transom storm windows, repainting of architectural details in heritage palette colors, installation of new house number and relocation of heritage plaque next to the front entrance, subject to finalization of details by planning staff. Are there any questions in regards to this application? Counsel McCarthy?
No questions. Just having replaced windows and doors in my house, whoever this person is, nudge, nudge, wink, wink, it's tremendous to go to the length that is being done to bring the windows up to heritage standards, because I know that's not cheap. So I really look forward to the look of this property once the improvements are made. Thank you.
And just a comment, if you have a chance to go back and look at the heritage report, the pictures of the applicant with the repurposed heritage features is quite amazing, actually. And to go to the designer and say, use these. So it's great. So if there's any further questions? Seeing none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. I have a memo from the Secretary of Coburg Heritage Advisory Committee regarding a heritage permit application for a new entrance and removal of window bars at the Coburg Police Station, 107 King Street West, Coburg, Coburg Police Services. The action recommended that council endorse the recommendation of the Coburg Heritage Advisory Committee and grant a heritage permit, number HP-2017-015, as submitted by Reno Piccini, Piccini Architect, on behalf of the Town of Coburg, for the following scope of work at the Coburg Police Station at 107 King Street West, Coburg. Removal of the metal bars from eight windows and repair the surrounding brick, and removal of existing stairs and platform and construction of a barrier-free front entrance, including new stairs, platform, and ramp, subject to finalization by staff. Are there any questions from members of council? Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only question I have, is the goal, they had this done like pre this winter?
I believe that as soon as we get approval, it would be to go ahead. And I'm sure the mayor and Counsel McCarthy are nodding their heads, yes.
If I may, Counsel Burkett, it's, yes, it's in the capital budget for this year, so the intent is to have it completed this year.
Thank you. Counsel Darling?
Yes, I'm just curious. I had a copy of an email sent to me in regard to the metal bars on the windows as being part of the heritage aspect of the armories. Obviously, the Heritage Committee and whatnot have looked at this. I would just wonder if we could elaborate that a little further as to why they're going to be removed.
So it was brought to our attention, actually, at the Heritage Meeting. Chief Kailu actually mentioned to us that they were on the building when it was constructed. And we do have pictures of it. They found them in the Northumberland Archives. So we did take that into consideration. The reason why we felt at the Heritage Committee to remove the bars is to better preserve the brickwork and surrounding of the windows. Because obviously, with the bars being in place right now, it's hard to maintain the brickwork, and it's actually breaking it away as well. When the windows have to be replaced, it would be very hard to, you know, have to remove those and put them back, kind of thing, and to do maintenance. So it's to better preserve the heritage, other heritage aspects of the building. And same with the, there were comments in regards to the ramp itself. And one thing, I did attend the Heritage Conference in Ottawa a week back. And one thing is, we're putting things in place, for example, accessibility to help greet people into that building. We're not necessarily taking away from the rest of the building, because ultimately, it can be removed. I know it's a lot of work to remove it, but it can be removed. So those are kind of things going forward as you're trying to adapt heritage buildings to accessibility needs. For example, one of the things with the police renovation there is now they have the warming, cooling area at the front where it's open to the public. And the issue is, people, it's like, come to the back door right now if you need accessible access. So giving that accessible access at the front gives that warming entrance that everyone's treated the same coming to the front and have that, and you don't have bars as you look at the window.
Yes, thank you. I just thought it'd be nice to explain to the public why we're doing that. And I think that was a very good explanation. And I understand, having a heritage building, it's definitely hard at times to bring them up to today's standard and preserve that heritage. Mr. McLaughlin?
Sorry, yes, if I may, Counsel Darling, supplement what Counsel Burkett's saying as well. As I understand it, the police services proposed to reproduce a brick window frame with the bars as a display, as an interpretive display within the front foyer area to provide some additional information on that regard. But Counsel Burkett is certainly correct from the context of the original building as an as an armory. When it was constructed, yes, the bars were there, but obviously, the committee felt, you know, looking at adaptive repurposing and reuse of buildings, you look at the, within the context of current use and functionality and purpose and display and such. So it was certainly looked at in that light, and it is also certainly beneficial to have some lasting memory through that interpretive display as well.
Thank you, Mr. McGlashan. I see it's, a lot of these decisions are made, the public doesn't get to hear exactly why unless they read the report, so it's nice for them to hear. Thank you.
Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you. And just further to the bars, the original armories building, there were bars on the main floor as well, and they have been taken away. So in fact, the interpretive panel will show the armories with the bars, and that was related to the fact that munitions were stored. And, you know, now it's a police services and that's not the same intent. Thank you.
Counsel Rowden?
Thank you, Counsel Burcat. This will be a great improvement to the front of that building, and I know we've got a lot of comments over the last few years I've been on council, but it really looked very grungy looking with those steps and everything crumbling at the front. When you mentioned the fact that we have the inside finished now and that will be a great improvement for accessibility, how long is it going to take for this to be done? Is it going to be just summer project or a couple of months or what's the scoop?
I'm not too sure on that in that regard. Director McGlashan? Sorry. Any other questions from members of council? Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you. I also wanted to make another point, Chair Burcat, and I'd ask if Director McGlashan could perhaps comment on it. I spoke with the heritage planner, Ms. Tori LePere, and she was explaining to me that in fact, this building is not identified, it is a heritage building. It is a building inside of a heritage conservation district. And that changes somewhat what happens to the building. If Director McGlashan could comment on that?
Director McGlashan?
Yes, in answer to Counselor McCarthy, the property is within a district which recognizes an area or grouping of heritage structures. The property itself does not have its own statement of reasons for designation or its own description of heritage features, but it is covered under the Heritage Conservation District Plan and the policies that go along with that. So it does have a different context of policy under the Heritage Act and the bylaws that implement the designation, whereas the former application on King Street West, it is individually designated and it actually does have specific statements of intent and designation and various attributes of the building that need to be maintained or preserved and such. So it does have a little bit different like policy and regulatory context, but it is a designated structure that is very clear under the Act, but it has a little different like policy and regulatory framework.
Any more questions from members of council? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. My sixth item tonight is a notice of Committee of Adjustment Hearing to be held on June 20, 2017, file number A-0217, 159 Stewart Street, Colberg, Marjan, including a planning staff report. The action recommended that council endorse the comments of planning staff and receive the memo for information purposes. Any questions in regards to this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Number seven, I have a notice of Committee of Adjustment Hearing to be held on June 20, 2017, file number A-0317-882, Joan Chalivich Way, Colberg, Peter, including a planning staff report. Action recommended that council endorse the comments of the planning staff and receive the memo for information purposes. Any questions in regards to this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
You worship, the unfinished business is listed in the bottom of the agenda, and there is a closed session meeting tonight.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Henderson?
The council meet closed session in accordance with Section 239 of the Municipal Act SO 2001 regarding personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, accessibility advisory committee applications, Colberg DBIA Board of Management Member Appointment Recommendation, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipal or local board regarding renewal parking lot lease negotiations.
All in favor? Carried. I'll now take a motion to adjourn. Counsel Burcat?